Here, because they're going to El Paso right now. Okay? So, there's already organized, there's already an organized El Paso flag football. Now, I know we're not a road team, I know we're not a travel team, and it's not a big deal to travel ten minutes up the road, but the kids get excited when they play in a different venue, so why can't we have a support team playing in El Paso League, where they come to us and we travel to them? Yeah, so it's just a little bit of homework to do with all of it. So, you don't have to be mental, right? Teams are already out there, what we've got to do is do some of the prep work, and then invite them here to the city.
And I'll be very honest, I love lacrosse. And so those are, so those are like golf, swimming, lacrosse, running, those are the most country sports, for obvious reasons, but there are scholarships, tons of scholarships in those sports, because if you want to try to be a football star, and Aaron Jones only comes one in a generation. You know, those are the things that those, the team sports are very difficult. Or normally, the NBA comes one in a generation. But when you become an individual sport, like lacrosse, there's many lacrosse players, runners, stuff like that, those are sports that are individual. So those are the sports that of course we want to concentrate on. But I think, uh, in the future, I think this will be seats for us, and then we'll see this flourish in time.
Ms. Meli?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Hi.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
Any one from the neighborhood? Yes. Item number twenty-three, discussion in action to approve any increase above three percent of the cost of living for all staff. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second. My name is, oh no. So, sorry, um, this is just something that, uh, needs to be done for our staff. Um, I work with them, and of course, I have a eight-to-five job, and so when I need them, they're there until six or seven, because I need questions answered, there is no give or go about it. They never question me, they say they can't do it, or can't do it. Our staff is the best staff in the city. And that's why I think they need this, because inflation is bad right now. Uh, and they work tirelessly, and you can see by the presentation today, they, they work their butts off and they don't complain. They might complain to us, but they don't complain to us. And that's something that it's for everybody, and also I want to include our city manager as well, to make sure she gets the paper sent, because those are, it's, it's the job that gets done. She's on twenty-four-seven, uh, seven days a week. And one of the things that I, I find, just to be here for the last month, that always phones getting answered, questions getting answered, and this athletic stuff, I know it takes a lot of time for them to get there and get that, uh, the grants, and that's what we've been working on. And those are questions that are getting answered immediately. Thank you.
Okay. What's your question?
When's, when's the last time, um, staff received the increase here in the city support? Across the board?
Cost of living, it wasn't this past year, but the year before?
Year before, yeah. It was a cost of living increase? Yes. And a, and a four percent? No, like a, a one percent. Very small. Very small. Yeah. This review will bring us up to, uh, standards in our area, correct? And we had an officer speak of retention earlier, which I think is important, and I think that support needs to be one of those cities that's able to afford its employees and competitive with, um, with salary ranges, which is why we're able to hold on to people for a longer period of time, and I feel that they're best in the city, along with, um, with its community. Um, which is why I asked when the last time they were able to work in that way.
Ms. Solapet?
And I just wanted to point out that the social security inflation rate is at six percent. So, our intent is the three percent, and next fiscal year, we will allocate another three percent to give it support. Just to kind of bring us up to par.
I, I would like, uh, you know, just to be very particular, to have the, the three percent effective on January twenty-third, uh, twenty-twenty-two. That is the beginning of our next payroll period. That way, we're not killing ourselves to get the paperwork done, for this next payroll session, which begins on Monday. We're, we're down a staff member, unfortunately, it's a staff member that does the bulk of the work for the payroll. Uh, and so, i- if we can have a little bit of time away, our HR department could also, uh, because, you know, just because we said so, uh, doesn't mean it happens immediately. We got to do the paperwork, and get it done, and get it filed, and, and everything in the computer up to date. And this is going to give us enough time. So if you could state it, uh, beginning on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
Mr. Laro, would you like to amend the motion? From the open?
Mayor, again. Yes, Ms. Bealos?
So obviously, we're okay, so that, that was not my question. Well, again, we're gonna be okay, we're talking about a hundred and, how many employees we have?
We're about a hundred and fifteen now, and we're talking probably, uh...
I just want to make sure we're gonna be okay, if I answer, we, yeah, we, uh, I mean, I'm not going to pay it, because...
Yeah. The money, the money is not a problem.
Is it okay?
Yes, so, so it's, it's, it's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. I think because we've had some, um, vacancies, we're able to shove money around where it won't impact our bottom line, because we move money around to make sure that we make up for the, those, uh, about a hundred and forty, because we're already at our second quarter of our fiscal year.
So are you saying a hundred and forty monthly?
No, no, for the whole year.
The three percent is for all the employees to be reduced to a hundred and forty in a year?
For the rest of, well, four years.
So it's a hundred and maybe five thousand dollars approximately?
Correct.
But because we're already on the second quarter of our fiscal year, it's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, um, impact.
For this, for this year?
For this fiscal year.
Correct. I'm getting ready to do our first budget amendment, and we will make sure that we come through it and see where we can, um, move money around so we can cover those a hundred and forty, if that's what council wishes.
Okay. Well, I, I hope we give a lock with the number of raises that we can, um, to any raise. We had discussed a couple of weeks ago, when our, our attorneys came and discussed how they had not had raises. How does that, how does that, and we had requested, as council, for you to look into, uh, those that have not had raises, uh, you know, et cetera, et cetera. How does that, how does that impact, um, we're still going to look into it, and possibly some of those areas that we need to raise? How does that impact, uh, our money?
Correct, so we're doing surveys right now that we're hoping to send in at our next budget meeting for next fiscal year, to revisit those items, um. But we address on, when, you know, the, the employees that came in and talked, I mean, we've had conversations, uh, there, there's been positions and opportunities that open up, and they're encouraged to apply, some have, some have received those letter moves. Uh, but I think right now, we're all, we're all in agreement, and I know that HR is working very diligently to make sure that we update our job descriptions, and we bring that at the next fiscal year.
Okay. So I'm, I just want to make sure we're gonna be okay, to increase the three percent plus, you know, the future raises that we're, uh...
Correct, and the other two positions that you all approved on the job description, that was approved through budget. We were just formalizing it. It's not like we gave, it wasn't through the budget process. The budget workshops, we discussed it, we approved the budget, and then we just came to council to make sure that we amend those job descriptions to fit the job duty.
And I, I understand those two positions, but what about the other hundred and plus? You know, are, are we looking into those and, you know, increasing them? I just want to make sure that, you know, when our shooting starts on the fifth year, we're definitely going to get more raises besides the two, to those that we're looking into.
Oh yes, we have a... Yes, we have a step increase that every two years, based on performance, they can qualify up to three percent, and that's every two years through an evaluation procedure. And that's been, and that's been done, um, those individuals that came had just received a raise at the beginning of last year.
Okay, so, those three percent that you're talking about are separate from these individuals that we're looking to, we just were getting here?
Yes ma'am, that was to an evaluation last year.
Okay, got it, I, I got it, okay?
Thank you.
We're studying all this money, you know, and, and, and...
And just one point to consider, um, if you make the motion, we have, most of the employees are non-contractual, do not have contracts. If you want to include those women employees that have contracts for the city support, I would indicate all employees, including those with contracts at the city support, and one contract with the city support. If that's the, the will of the, the city council, I would specify, if you want to include contractual employees.
I have one last statement. This council approved future development of, of residential and commercial, um, businesses that are going to be going up pretty soon. I'm almost certain that the, the influx of new business and residents in the city is going to afford the, the increase. Same, uh, pattern, do you agree with that comment?
Uh, Mr. Cruz, I think that's correct, I mean, there's going to be substantial development in the next two, three, four, or five years into the foreseeable future.
So my mo- my motion right now is, is to amend the, the previous one, and to provide our staff, including contractual staff, with a three percent increase for this fiscal year.
Effective?
Effective January twenty-third of twenty-twenty-two. Sorry.
Mayor, we have two speakers for a second. Our first speaker is Mayor Cruz.
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Laro. Um, I have two questions that are to be addressed. Uh, there's an amount that was given, the a hundred and forty thousand. If you're in a contracted employee, isn't that necessarily an increase? And we just want to know if it's going to be strictly approved? Um, that's, I mean, that's the first question, because we're not just talking about, I think we're all thinking about the judge, talking about, I mean, you've seen, you've seen from notes list of who those people are as well. Uh, and the second thing was, I actually have a question for Ms. Camelia, uh, in regard to what prompted me, this, um, to, um, the agenda. Obviously, I think there are members of staff that know that I, I was in charge, I think, they would have said, I could be very, our rock star, um, on, make sure that we keep the good decisions going. Um, but I'm wondering, is, is, please, as the cost of living has increased nationally, is that the immediate that we're reading this? Um, or was there trying to, for actually begin to, to look at specific numbers to make sure that they're in line with, uh, status or status matters around these, the terms of community towards larger? Um, and I just think that, um, there are some issues right now, and, and, and they don't, the city staff, and actually are maybe, uh, uh, accurate.
Ms. Cruz, you can answer.
If you...
Another question for me?
I have a question.
I have no answer.
So, um, um, what I heard about the contractual, she mentioned the attorney and the directors are vendors, right, we, we go out, we're banned, and we contract them, just like we contacted these things? So they're not considered employees?
Right. So she said, what led me to this? Is that what I understood?
They're not going to be harmed.
And harmed, uh, because they deserve it.
Was it, she also mentioned, if you, kind of, the inflation or something?
Yeah, of, of course inflation, but you got to understand, when you come out of work at three-thirty in the afternoon, and you, and you, you make a meeting at five, or you call police officers, and you get there right away? Those are things that I've been with net for years now. And the staff has always worked hard, they're, they're always worked late, they're here now. And, uh, when you have a conversation with them, you know, I think everybody deserves a, a raise. So, that's bottom line, that's me. You know, because we're, we're, we're in a very deep hole right now, uh, in the, everywhere. So, if I can help anybody, I will do it again, and I wish it was more. And I would have to be talked about giving people more. But, yeah, I think everybody deserves a raise. No matter, you know, we're, trust me, we've, we've had meetings where there's a lot of things coming into court, and we're here for it. So, if it's paying a, a police officer a little bit more, if it's paying our staff a little bit more, I'm there.
Sergeant Casilla Munoz?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First and foremost, uh, Mr. RSL, I would like to thank you very much for taking this progressive approach and being proactive with this. Uh, and I do, I do feel that you are investing in the employees, because contractual or not, our citizens don't see that, our citizens only see that, that patch back there. We don't have the time to explain to them, contractual employees, all the act and help me. But we're not in that business. And even, even if we're, uh, we're here on our own time right now, trying to do that. So I want to thank you for that, that's a, a step in the right direction. Uh, investing in us, especially people here that have been part of the city from the get-go, as far as myself and other, other people. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Ruben Ritis?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
Any one from the neighborhood?
Yes.
Item number twenty-four, discussion in action to direct staff to investigate inclusion of lighting in El Paso neighborhoods.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mayor?
Ms. Bealos?
Ms. Solapet? Yes, we have, uh, each type of, uh, requests before, like in, in a home neighborhood, or maybe not a home city, but in a neighborhood. And, um, some of our neighborhoods are still without lighting, um, at all, or one little light somewhere, or like this. Um, now, Mr. Garcia is asking for investigation. Do we have, um, some of those reports from the different areas that were requested? Do you have that at hand? Not, I mean, not, not right now, sorry.
Yes, I do have, um, a list of E-Homs and Streetlights that have been requested in the past. Um, I also want to make you aware, as, I mean, because you've been here long enough, that there are Senate bills that are, that passed through Senate, that we have to decrease our energy consumption by five percent each year for ten years. So every time that we add, um, I think by fixing that was the LED retrofitting? Right, but in talking, having conversations with El Paso Electric, we're not there yet. It'll take them about two years in order for them to provide the service. We had talked about outsourcing the maintenance of LED lights. However, El Paso Electric will not let anyone else work on their poles. So if, if it's their pole, and we do LED, they are the only ones that are going to be able to go in there and replace. Right, um, one of the issues they told me is the city of El Paso right now is having an issue because it's not cost effective. Right, so they're saying it'll take about two years before El Paso Electric starts providing that type of maintenance and being rolled out to us. So I just caution you that when we put more lighting, we might be, you know, there, there are Senate bills, which is Senate Bill Eight-Ninety-Eight, and there's another Senate bill that says new Texas law will allow more cities to become dark sky communities. Right, where they're advocating for us to be energy efficient, right?
So I brought this item in.
I'm sorry, I wasn't, I'm sorry, that was my second, that was my second question, this is still on me. You know, what about, uh, the state had, uh, imposed a couple of years ago? How do we handle that? But how do we handle the area? For, for example, I think, if you remember, there's one area that was about fifty-something houses with one light. And I think requesting, uh, for that to be looked at and, uh, lights to be placed. Um, but I know that, you know, we have this responsibility to the state about, you know, lighting. So that was my, that would be my question. I know that Ms. Garcia has come for an investigation, I guess, for now. Um, and then for the city to come back and go report. I'm assuming that's what you were requesting, Ms. Camelia?
Yes ma'am. Yeah, that's exactly what I'm requesting, I'm talking to the city manager back before about it. Uh, it's, it's, she did tell me about those laws. Um, but the way I say it here is that a lighting day is a crime in areas sometimes, you know? I love Christmas because I can see outside, but when it comes to right now, if my neighbor's moving, he doesn't have a light, it's dark. So I, I really want to make sure that, um, we get some sort of lighting, or some sort of deterrent. Um, just an investigation right now, and make sure we have a plan for when El Paso Electric is ready, and we make sure we have something in place so we can help, uh, deter whatever we're trying to deter, uh, the darkness, and just make sure we're ready for that, because it is, as of right now, it's a constant need to do right now, but it won't be in the future.
Ms. Solapet, can we justify? For example, like that area that only has one light, can we justify to them, you know, that in this area we want to add lighting?
Correct, so, yes, because we've had added lighting. Uh, Mr. Reyes brought an item where we added lighting to some central area, and we did add several lights, so I think we can treat them as a case-to-case basis. The investigation would tell us where, where the need would be, and then that would be a council's decision. Right, I would just caution you that we need to work very closely with El Paso Electric that we are conserving that five percent, because we should be reducing it, not increasing it. And that's mandated by law.
So I guess we're just talking on, uh, the investigation.
Correct, so we can go back to El Paso Electric to give us a deterrent. Right, um, I'm pretty sure planning and zoning can pin up where the lights are at, and then we can, you know, I'll let them know the areas that we've brought up in the past, so they can, um, make sure that they capture that information. And then we can come back to council and just send it and give you a percentage of what the increase would be, uh, you know, recommending it, it's going to be on the date, because I know LED does conserve, but it is very expensive, and we don't want to put the city in a place where we can't keep up with the maintenance.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor, we have a speaker for a second, Mayor Cruz?
Um, yes, thank you for that. Um, the only thing I mentioned in this one person, I want to thank Ms. Camelia for bringing this, uh, very important item to the agenda. Obviously, it's a very, should be a very high priority. Um, but I would, I would also like to, I guess, reiterate that two years ago, there were some investigation into different types of lighting, and one of them was solar, solar run, or solar panel run, uh, lighting, that I know, at the time, council thought that was too expensive. I wholeheartedly disagreed with that, because even though it's like the last thing caused him high by the ability to, um, you know, the, 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 the hot, you know, pink stuff, and the, and the blue run. And so I hope that's something that both councils best can consider, that's not only a guideline, um, but it's also, um, just, I don't know, a way of future, if you will, and it's just a way to go, I think. That's it, thank you.
Ruben Ritis?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
Any one from the neighborhood?
Yes.
Item number twenty-five, discussion in action regarding the appointment of current and or appointment of new members to serve on the city boards.
Uh, Mayor and Council, the current terms for several of our boards have inspired, and what I'd like to do in this meeting is exercise the reappointment and/or appointment of new members to serve on the boards. In addition to that, I'm requesting that the city provide our members with an introduction and orientation type training for the board they will be serving on. This is going to help assist with the retaining of members, and also provide an overview for their job description as board members. Um, I believe that each council person has, has selected an individual to sit on on each board. You may choose to elect the same one, I just feel that we, I'd like to bring it up to date, and correct me if I'm not, our Board of Adjustments has not been able to meet since last year in September, I believe, or something like that, I'm not correct? I don't know what the case law looks like right now, but I just feel that we're doing an injustice to the, to the residents, by not allowing the commission, uh, to, to, to organize and, and hold their, their meetings as, as such. Um, we owe it to them. Um, but again, this, this is my, my, uh, my agenda item. Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Ms. Bealos?
So, Ms. Cruz, thank you for bringing this up, and, and, I know, before I got through this, I heard, um, Mayor had, uh, recruiting more Mayor, and recruiting, um, new members. Uh, we have helped a lot of these boys by including them, especially, it starts to get them to commit, you know? And you're right, they should have a description and, uh, indication on what the description is. Um, so I want to thank you for bringing this up. Um, but I believe, Ms. Solapet, we have discussed this with you, with Mayor, you too.
Um, correctly, I'm going to go in my room. Uh, for the board have expired, I believe, um... I'm sorry, mayor, can you refresh my memory what we were thinking of doing? I don't even have one in mind, uh, Mr. Cruz is proposing to do right now. Do we need to have them sworn in again?
We do need to have them sworn in. I'm looking at Ms. Llanta and Ms. Olivia, and they're telling me we do need to have them sworn, uh, sworn in again. And also complete training again. I would suggest completing training once again.
Correct. So reappointment is just like re-election, right? Uh, Mr. Navas got re-elected and he has to take this training again and, you know, to the item of reappointment.
And this is great because, I mean, we, we were working on it, so, um, I'm glad that, that we can have somebody else to work on it as well. Um, I know the historical landmark commission was also having some problems meeting because some of the members, um, had, had resigned. So that's another one that we need to correct and find some members for that, for that commission.
So at this point, um, we still, we gotta have amendments for the next one. I don't know what to do.
Yes, they need to be sworn in again.
But we'll be placing items on the agenda at our next meeting to be able to reappoint them.
Shall we go, uh, board by board or commission by commission?
Correct. Yes. That way we can kind of do them and, uh... And since they're volunteers, they might not all be available to come in. But, I mean, staff can take care of the swearing in and if they're unable to come in, we just need them approved to council so we can start the process. Correct.
I will tell them. So do we approve this item or wait until we, um...
Yes.
Um...
So approving this item is directing me to come back to council with agenda items to reappoint commission by commission. Um, if any council member or we have any applications, we'll disseminate to see if you want to do appointments. Right now, we do have vacancies in the historical light commission that we're urging that we need to fill uh, just because we haven't been able to have a core. Just like the one I was just saying.
I, I think we need to amend the motion to, to reflect what, like I just said, so that she can bring individual members for consideration and, and election.
So to direct staff, motion to direct staff to reappoint.
So my motion is to direct staff to reappoint those members on those boards and commissions. Sir.
Mayor, will you speak with me, sir? Mayor, please.
Um, and it goes to me. I don't think what the motion would be correct. We, um, I don't think that's someone that's going to point us back that you want to, it's local. But whatever, maybe we'll figure that out. Um, the only thing I wanted to mention was, I was wondering if you all are going to be reappointing everyone this year, if you're going to be reaching out to them, see if they actually want to serve. Uh, I also hear there are a couple of people that are serving on the board, our commission. And I obviously think that's an issue with the new, with some ordinance that they can have or with the, the council members have, uh, figures of, that they need to only be able to serve one. And so I wonder if you all are going to be back correct on that, uh, being as, having the opportunity of seeing people. Um, um, I think it would be important for people to know where your, where your all heads on that. Um, yeah, Mr. Garcia, comments? Thank you.
Mayor?
Ms. Villalos?
Ms. Llanta, refresh my memory. I know that you're a member of the board. Did we actually change the ordinance that we stood next or have two board members in two different, uh, positions, uh, position in the commission? Or did we just go on?
No. So we go in and directed staff to go back and create a ordinance that ordinance has not been created as a, yeah.
Okay. So, so what's the, uh, seven of those that are going to be, uh, going to, uh, commission?
So every commission has their own different set of bylaws. Like I can speak for the Ethics Commission that we're, that we're stuck to council. That one states that you cannot serve in any other commission but the Ethics. Right? So you would have to go back and look at the bylaws, um... Or we can create an audit saying that that's not something that you all want to do, like you have instructed. It's just we've been, you know, with the animal and everything, it's been a little bit, we have a huge list, a to-do list. Um, and we're trying to work as fast as we can with the resources that we have.
Since we're on this subject, I can please correct that. So we, so we're going to, so rank on lines. Yes, ma'am. Rudy. Ruben Riquez?
Yes.
Cesar Navas?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Yes.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colobillaos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-six, discussion and action regarding the extension of Socorro District on Nevades Road behind the SuCoro Mission.
Mayor and council, the historical district is one that's identified by architectural significance and their structures are currently, are currently standing in that area that have not been identified as such because they've been overlooked or they haven't been studied enough. I'd like to have the site studied and researched for its historical significance. The city of Socorro must continue to preserve the areas of its historical sites. There's a home that's on Nevades Street, very close to the mission. Um, I, I've heard from elders, um, from, from different parts of the city, um, talk about it and anyone will trade those. And if in fact those statements aren't truly correct, I'd like for staff to, to file a, um, with the Texas Historical Commission, a, a research study on this, on this site. I'll provide you with the actual address. I don't have it readily available. Um, and if so, um, the funds will not come out of the city's general fund. There are funds located in the Texas Historical Commission's historic preservation fund. And I believe Ms. Nevades is familiar with, with those grants and funding.
Mayor?
Ms. Villalos? Ms. Villalos?
Um, I'm sorry, can you, it's real quick. I, I, I love this. This is awesome. Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Um, but real quick, um, we do have construction approved or getting ready to get approved on that street. Will this impact, um, that area? That's what I'm getting into the impact. Is that, you know, area purchased already from the developer or are they working on it? Or this has nothing to do with what, what the developers are doing on that street, the developers?
So, so I think, uh, Nevares, what the Nevares you're referencing is on the other side of Alameda.
Okay. Okay. Since I don't have a map, I would, you know, I didn't know exactly, or that is, uh, what area we're looking at, but I just wanted to make sure that, um, it's not impacting and we're doing unnecessary, um, work. Thank you.
Want you to approve? Sir.
Ruben Riquez?
Yes.
Cesar Navas?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Hi.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colobillaos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-seven, discussion and action to approve Resolution 666 to support Socorro Village Thirty-four. Alonse has proposed a development for affordable housing located at 148 Buford Road and leaving the SuCoro Village Apartments in the city of Socorro.
Want you to, want you to approve? Sir. Mayor and council, I'm, I'm going to state my summary as best I can. My device is shut off, so I can't, I can't read it anymore. But, um, Think Housing Development is a company, um, out of, out of California that just recently purchased the Socorro Village Apartments located at 148 Buford Road. Um, if you were to travel down Alameda and you were to cross, right across Tacos Don Pucu, it's those apartments, it's that apartment complex, it's been there for, for quite some time. Um, I did receive notification from the company since it is in my area. Um, I, I would like to have a lot of say, and not I, I would like the community and council to have a lot of say in how, how it's developed and how it's rehabbed. Um, not the, the exterior, there'll be some rehabilitation to the exterior. They're going to do a complete rehabilitation to the interior of these, of these apartments, um, which is very nice for the community. But in speaking with, uh, Mr. Garcia, um, earlier before this happened, he was interested in providing the community of Socorro with an ADA compliant park that would allow for people with disabilities to, to, I mean, to use certain exercise equipment that you wouldn't normally see in, in any other park here in our city. So since this happened and this became available to us, I wanted to propose to the, to this, uh, Think Housing Development, since they are requesting from us a, um, a letter of support or a letter of no objection to be able to do this, this project here. The reason why I chose this project to, to happen is because they are willing and they are able, uh, financially, to provide this ADA compliant park at no cost to the city. And at the same time, they are willing to open it up to the entire community of Socorro. And at the same time, they are willing to maintain the park at no additional cost to the city. So we killed two birds with one stone. I believe that it's, it's a great project. And at the same time, they are going to house, uh, some, what a, a social worker, um, within their community as well to provide activities for the youth and, 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 and support to the, to the community there. Um, and this is what I'm bringing to the table today.
Mr. Garcia?
Uh, thank you, Rudy. I really appreciate that. That's the, the basis of communication. Um, the city's core, um, was over, over half, wasn't seen as something we needed a gay park by the county. So that was something that I, as a special education teacher, affected me personally. Uh, as we walked through the streets when we were asking for people's votes, our community has a lot of, of kids with special needs that go to the schools around here, and this is something great that Mr. Cruz threw in, uh, thinking about a conversation. I do appreciate that. Because, um, our, the way schools work sometimes is that they send all the kids who are with special needs under the three ways sometimes. But the thing is that now we're going to have an ability to help them and play like everybody else. Because sometimes you're in wheelchairs, sometimes they can't function as if you're everybody else. And this is something that's going to be, uh, on air for them. So, thank you, Mr. Cruz, and I appreciate that a lot.
Mayor?
Ms. Villalos?
Real quick, I'm, I'm a little lost. I, I love the idea. But what is it that we need, we need approval for this in order for, um, because we have a ordinance that, um, for some of the, in some respect, uh, this, this community is not allowed? I'm not sure why we're voiding this. I'm sorry. Hope you understand what it just is, but, um...